Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 2022 School Board Candidates Forum, presented by the Noblesville Chamber of Commerce, but it is for the community. My name is Bob Dubois, President and CEO of the Noblesville Chamber, and we're thrilled to see a great turnout tonight. I know there's some conflicts on dates. There's lots of other events tonight that drew some people away, so we really appreciate the fact that you're here. We really appreciate the folks that are tuning in from home. I'd like to give a special shout out to our friends at Hamilton County Television and Jim Wofford for webcasting today live and then making it available to stream at your leisure from their website. Also want to thank the City of Noblesville for making the room available tonight, which is really critically important. We think it's important for you to see the candidates as they might appear in their governance role. It won't be in this room, but it'll be in a room very similar, and so we think it's important to be in this type of setting for this. I also want to give a special thank you tonight. Choosing a moderator for this type of event is really important. It's a critical thing to make sure it's a fair and informative session, and I honestly couldn't think of a better person than retired Judge Steve Nation, our county council representative, and we are so grateful to have you here tonight to lead us through this important session. So I'm going to turn it over to you, and it's all yours tonight. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bob. Again, just as an overview of what we're doing here tonight, this is a candidates forum, but the purpose is to go ahead and let you hear the candidates talk about what they think about the school board, but also what they would do in that position. It is not going to be a debate, so it's not usually like the normal, but so this is for your information, and that is what we're here for today. It is very important to listen to what they say. I'm pretty sure that they will stay around afterwards and talk if you wish to go ahead and ask additional questions. But because we have a very strict format of timing tonight, in fact, opening statements are a minute and a half, so each person has only a minute and a half to do an opening and closing statement. Because of that, if there were flaws, a lot of things going on, please, the time for your candidate. So please go ahead and listen. It's information, and we're going to go ahead and pursue that. We'll start out with the opening statements, then we'll go ahead and ask several questions. Some will have been given to us by the Chamber of Commerce, some from the audience, but we'll go ahead and read those, and then we will complete the proceedings tonight with a closing statement. And Bob up here in the front, we'll go ahead, we will go ahead and be sure that we do our time. So we have, I don't know if you can get me close to the mic so that I can hear you on the mic. We have randomly drawn the candidates to who is going to start to speak in the opening statements. The order is going to be reversed for the closing statements. So winner of the draw to go ahead and start, Melba, please go ahead.
Hi. So thank you so much for coming out this evening. I know that we all have busy schedules. Thank you so much, Judge Nation, and thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for giving us this opportunity. So my name is Melba Kaiser. I was born in Cuba. My parents immigrated here shortly after Castro took power. They didn't want us growing up in a communist socialist regime. So I've basically grown up in the United States. I love this country. I love the people. I became a naturalized citizen 50 years ago. I raised my daughter here, our daughter. We now have grandkids. I believe that I got a wonderful education when I came here. Unfortunately, the education system in the U.S. has been in decline for several decades. I don't see how you can build a life for yourself, how you can, with the Chamber of Commerce especially, we need to make sure that these kids have the skills that they need to fill the jobs of the future. So education is very important. I love children, always have, and so that's why I'm running for school board, is because I want to give them the same opportunities that I had and the reason why my parents brought me here. Thank you.
And the next up is...
Hi. Sorry, I'm not used to talking on a microphone. Thank you, everybody, for being here, just echoing Melba's sentiments. Thank you, Judge Nation, for spending your time here. I know you're quite a busy man as well. As a Noblesville native, I was, well, as a native, born and raised here in Noblesville. I went through a Noblesville school district myself, as well as my brother. I have three children here, oldest 27 years old. He started kindergarten in 2000, and I have my youngest, who is to graduate in 2030, so easy math for me, which is great. Makes it a consecutive 22 years currently that I've had a child in Noblesville schools, with eight more to go, which will make it 30. I think I should get a brick or something for that. But Noblesville, I obviously love Noblesville and the community because I'm still here and choosing to raise my kids here with the same values. As a substitute teacher as well for nearly six years now, I've been in the schools as volunteers, as a substitute. I've chaperoned things, and I'm not trying to sit here and tell you guys that I know everything, and I'm not going to try to pretend that I do, because I don't. I'm not a teacher. I'm not a school employee such as that, just simply a substitute. So I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel. I'm just looking to get involved and make sure we can turn it around and get things back on track and focus on our academics.
And the next up is Brian.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you to the Noblesville Chamber. Thank you, Judge Nation, and thank you to all of my fellow candidates. My name is Brian Lasky. I'm a father of a kindergartner at North Elementary. I am an experienced nonprofit leader. I'm a human resource professional. I've sat on boards. I founded boards. I understand what it takes to have boards work efficiently and effectively. I know how to build consensus. I understand that one person can't get anything accomplished. You have to work together. You have to build that consensus. You have to work together. You can't come onto a board with an agenda. You have to work as a team to move things forward, and that's what I would do for Noblesville schools. We have an incredible district here. We have to just work to make it a little bit stronger. We have a great foundation, and we have to continue working at that incredible foundation. That's what I want to do. I've listened to what our teachers are asking for, what our community is asking for, and as a board member, I would continue doing that. Listen to what our students, our teachers, and our community asks for. Thank you.
The next up is Chuck.
Hi, I'm Chuck Haberman. Thank you all for being here, everybody. Thanks again for being here. I want to thank everybody else for the support that they've shown up to this point and the continued support, hopefully after tonight, and I appreciate everybody taking the time to come out and get to know everybody and what they stand for. I've been in Noblesville since 2016, and I currently work for the City of Noblesville, and since I moved here in 2016, I've served the community and the youth of our community in central Indiana. My intent in the school board is to continue to give the school system the tools and resources they need to be successful, whether that's teacher pay, new buildings, you know, shifting a referendum to accomplish those goals. I want to work as a team with the rest of the school district and the rest of the school board to accomplish our goals as a community.
All righty. Bob, thank you for organizing this with the Chamber tonight, and Judge Nation, thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming, because this is going to be a very important election for our school board this year. I'm Joe Forghey. I've lived and worked in this community for 45 years. I and my late wife Cynthia raised all five of our kids here. This community has been incredible, both for education and living in this community. Five of my children were educated in Noblesville schools, and I currently have five grandchildren in Noblesville schools, and one of them's already graduated, and she's off to Butler with thousands of dollars of scholarship. And our schools are in good hands. We sent all our other seniors down the road last year with $6.3 million of scholarships to the great education they're getting at Noblesville schools. I'm running for Noblesville School Board so that children of this community and my grandchildren attend great schools. We live in a great community that has great schools, and we all know that strong schools make a strong community. Thank you.
Well, now we'll turn to the questions, and again, I'm going to say the question, and we have a set order. I'll be able to answer that, but if for some reason you want the question repeated when it comes to you, just please tell me, and I will repeat it. And the first question is, what are your top three priorities you look to address as a school board member?
All right. First thing, we've been in the top 1% of all the STEM classes in the nation, and I want to continue our strong STEM program. We have seen it increase about 50% over the last few years, and it's a top-notch program nationally, and not only do we do it in the high schools, we do it in the elementary schools, too. We call it STEAM there: science, technology, art, engineering, and math. Okay? That's number one. Number two, our SAT scores have been in the top 5% of the state, which puts us in the top 5%. And you think about SAT scores, they're the finished product, and we're in the top 5% and ahead of most Hamilton County schools. And the last thing I want to do is something that Judge Nation's involved in. I want to get involved in the Pursuit Institute. It's our Hamilton County Career and Technology Center. We're moving it from J. Everett Light, which they had the money before. We have huge grants through the county council, which are helping organize this. I think our schools are in a great place academically based on what we're seeing in here, so I would like to take that and raise it a little higher, but I really want to apply my abilities, which are knowing all the school board presidents, knowing most of the school boards, knowing most of the superintendents, knowing the county council, and knowing most of the business owners in Noblesville where we put these kids out to work once we train them. So that's my top three things.
Chuck.
My top three would be really financial stewardship. I think I have a unique perspective on the funding in the community and the school district. I think that would be advantageous moving forward with the referendum coming to an end and potentially renewing it, so I want to look at all of the financial tools that we have as a school district to come up to accomplish all the goals that we would like to do moving forward. Secondly, I want to focus on career development, life and employability skills. There's a lot of things that the schools do really, really well. I think we can improve upon giving kids the opportunity to learn about careers at an early age, engage in those career fields while they're still in school, and even develop certificates and training while they're in high school to go into a career afterwards. And then finally, just simply communication and accountability. I've demonstrated my leadership in the community. Since I've moved here, I want to continue to do that, to hold everyone accountable to everything. I know transparency is a big thing moving forward, and communication, so I think it's important to have consensus building and be able to bring people together to come to a conclusion to meet strategic priorities and goals.
Melba.
Yes, so my top three priorities are first to increase the proficiency in reading and writing, and I want to do that especially in the elementary schools. It's going to go across all schools, but especially in the elementary, because basically data shows that if you don't get these kids where they're proficient in reading, especially by third grade, they suffer the rest of their lives with employability, with careers, with being able to make a good living for themselves. So I want to especially stress improving the reading, the writing, and the math in the elementary schools. Currently, with the STEAM program that we have and the STEM programs, it is true that we are nationally recognized for that, but that's basically 3% of the high schoolers that we have right now. I want to address the other kids who are falling behind. My second priority is to continue working with the legislation, because I think that our legislators basically are the ones that fund a lot of the things that we have, and they set the priorities for the state. So I want to continue working with the legislators, as I did with the civics legislation, to see what other legislation we can put forth that is going to improve the education system in Indiana as a whole. And my third priority would be to be also a steward of the funding. I want to make sure we eliminate any wasteful spending that doesn't directly address improving the core academics for the kids. If it doesn't improve the core academics for the kids, then we just need to not fund it.
And then Brian.
My top three priorities, first and foremost, teacher pay. To me, it's embarrassing that Noblesville is the lowest-paid metro district in Hamilton County. When you look at our tax rates, you look at home values, the fact that we pay our teachers lower than any other metro district, especially when that was included in our last referendum. We've made a lot of strides there, but there's a lot of room for improvement. Secondly, I agree with Joe. The Pursuit Institute is great, but we have to tie into businesses a lot more. We have a huge labor shortage, and that is an untapped resource. We need to prepare these kids for careers, especially when we look at college and career readiness. College, Noblesville is there, but career readiness, we are lagging behind state standards. So we need to get these kids ready for career, especially when we look at things like auto mechanics, we look at CNAs, we look at all of these careers where there is just not enough labor. We need to get them out. We need to get them trained. We need to get them ready and tie them into our great Noblesville businesses that have just a constant now-hiring sign in their window. And then secondly, I am a huge proponent of social-emotional learning. As an HR manager, I can tell you, these are career readiness skills. These are the skills we're interviewing for, we're looking for, because those are career readiness skills.
And then Miss.
Okay. So my top three are firstly to improve communication and work to rebuild the trust between our district and the families and our community as a whole, which includes having the accountability. And the second one is working together with the other four board members and Dr. Hile to make sure we are focusing on the core academics so that our teachers can actually have more time to teach and therefore allowing our parents to actually parent our children rather than expecting our teachers to parent our children. This also, because of the academics, would ensure that the students are ready for their career or their continuing education path, whichever they choose upon graduation. And I would also like to help advocate for the phenomenal teachers and educators, other staff members in our district, because we do have some pretty amazing teachers I know firsthand. And so while we can hopefully attract by babysitting our financials and being a good steward of our financials, we can hopefully attract and retain new teachers, new staff as we need them. And I think that's, I'm going to cut it off there, because I can go on.
Well, the second question deals with staff. The foundation of any high-performing school district is built on its ability to attract, develop, and retain high-quality teachers. With Indiana facing a teacher shortage, what actions would you support to ensure Noblesville excels in the placing and keeping high-quality teachers in the classroom? And we'll start with Chuck.
I think it's going to take a lot of creativity. There's a lot of things that we can do. I think pay is one of those levers that we can pull, but I think there's other ways that we can combat the labor shortage in the teaching field. I think one is an exciting thing. Everybody's kind of brought up the Pursuit Institute. If you've been in the news lately, you've seen that they've created their own program to kind of create our own and develop our own teachers through apprenticeship, and that's very neat. I think it's going to take more programs like that or similar to that and other creative ways to grow that pipeline. And I think there's other things that we can do with retention. And I think there's other things that we can do with retention to incentivize teachers to stay and not look elsewhere when they're ready to advance. So I think it's going to take a lot of creativity and collaboration with the teachers, the union, the community, and really looking at all the different things and tools that we have to go forward.
And Melba.
Yes, so I do believe that we need to attract more teachers, and pay is important, but it isn't everything. I want to say, I've heard from many teachers who said that they left the teaching profession because they didn't feel respected, they didn't feel that they had, people had their backs, they felt that they were not appreciated for everything that they do for our kids. So aside from making sure that they are compensated appropriately, I also want to improve the communication between the teachers. I want them to know that I have their backs. I'm always willing to listen. My mother was a teacher, my daughter's a teacher, so I have that in my family, and I respect teachers. They spend so much time with our kids. They should be respected, they should be appreciated. And I think that by letting them know that we have their backs, and that we know that they're great, and that we need them, and that our children need them also, I think that will go a long way to helping to retain teachers.
Thank you. Brian.
So definitely pay is one thing, but as Chuck mentioned, it's not the silver bullet. There are lots of other levers we can pull. Looking at, is our benefit package attractive? We just made a transition from Cigna to Anthem. That's a highly attractive network. But what else could we do to sweeten the pot? Are we looking and shopping our pharmacy benefit manager, which is big HR speak, and that's what I do for a living, but that could save us millions of dollars at a district level, that we could then use that to pass that money along to our teachers, and that's a win-win. That doesn't cost us anything at the district level, but it saves our teachers a lot of money. What can we do so our teachers don't have to spend money out of their own pocket funding supplies for their classroom? How can we leverage the community to help support our teachers in that way also? But as Melba said, it's also the respect. Talking to teachers, they don't feel respected. So what can we do to ensure that people aren't saying some of the nastiest things to our teachers and about our teachers, when all they're doing is their job? In no other profession would we talk to and about a profession the way we talk about our teachers in Noblesville, and it's absolutely disgusting. And we need to stop that at a board level and at administration level.
And Misty.
So I've got several things written down, which would be obviously pay. Not to keep repeating everybody, but it is what it is. Pay and your benefits. You need to give support to the teachers and all staff members for that matter, whether it's financial or physical, or the benefits that you don't actually see in a dollar sign, or I guess you would when it comes to your 401s and your health insurance, and you have the better benefits. More collaboration, just helping to work together, not only just within your building, the district as a whole, and the board, everyone involved. And maybe do, don't know that you do or not, but maybe do exit interviews when someone decides they're going to leave. Interview them, find out why they're leaving, so hopefully they would be more inclined to tell you the truth if it was a sour situation. Removing any non-academic responsibilities, therefore freeing up their time to actually educate the students in the classroom. Communication, listen, be an advocate for your staff members, for your teachers. It is very important. It goes along the lines with the respect.
Thank you.
All righty. Along that lines, I've personally written 500 handwritten thank you notes to teachers this year, and most of them, I stick a $10 Starbucks card in, because this community's been so doggone good to me that I, every day, wake up and think, how can I make a teacher's life better by reaching and pushing them up? The pay is a major thing. I've sat in on both of the last two negotiations with some of the teachers forum that I see here. I've sat through the last two negotiations, and we, through the state legislature and through our referendum, got a great pay increase for the teachers the last two years. All right? But we can't end there, because we see what inflation's doing to all of us. So I've put myself on the line with the teachers. I've sat in with the benefits package this last year, where we took maybe, nod your head if I'm correct, about $200,000 out of the cost of the, yes, about $200,000 out of the cost of the benefits package, which puts money back into the teachers. I'm there every day, trying to figure out what we can do to make this place a great place for teachers. I walk up and down the streets. I saw some, just as a math teacher the other day to me, I said, okay, we need to get you tied up with Dr. Kendrick back here to see what we're going to do with that. We hired a new CFO, Dr. David, not doctor, but David Horton-Miller, who has been just excellent in helping us with the benefits packages, the health packages, because he came from a larger situation, which has been really good for us. So I show up every day. What can I do to make a difference in the life of the teacher, how it may be, just a pat on the back? Thank you.
Well, the next area is community and parental involvement. As an elected official, you would be representing all the residents and taxpayers of Noblesville School Corporation. What actions will you personally take to ensure that you are connecting with parents and community members with varying points of view? And we'll start with Mel.
Thank you. Yes, so as I've been walking around and knocking on doors, I've already been asking some of those very questions, and that is, how can I communicate with you? But also, how can I get you to give me input on what is happening, what your concerns are? So there are several ideas I have in mind. First of all, I would like to definitely increase the communication and the transparency, because I'm actually, I don't have children in the school. I have grandchildren, but I'm also a taxpayer. So I understand how all of these things impact the school, and I understand from different viewpoints how people feel about the school system and what's happening in the schools and how it is being funded. So basically, I want to reach out and make sure that we are communicating in more through either social media or in newspapers or in some different way, when we have especially some new policies that are coming up that need to be communicated. I think we need to try to attract more people to the school boards. There's a possibility, I've been thinking of possibly suggesting to my other school board members that maybe we meet at a different time, in which we might be able to attract different people to come. We may need to change the date or the time of the school boards. And I'm trying to, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. I apologize. Anyway, my time has expired.
Brian.
As a school board member, I think you have to be available for all your constituents. And your constituency isn't just the people who are voting for you. It's the people who don't vote for you as well, because their voice sometimes are the loudest. It's also the people who can't vote for you yet. It's the students who are actually the users of the school district that we are responsible for. And I believe I'm the only candidate who has made it known that I would hold office hours on an ongoing basis if elected to the school board. Office hours for students, for teachers, administrators, and members of the community. And that is something I'm saying publicly here, that if elected, I would do. I would meet with anyone and everyone who wants to meet with me if elected, because your voice would matter, because it has to matter. You either have a child in the school, you're a taxpayer in the community, and you care about the school. And so that would be something that I would do, because your voice matters.
Thank you. And Misty.
So first step would be to work with the other board members and superintendents to work on new, I guess, regulations for the board meetings, so that we can open the communication to the community. Anyone that wants to speak, they're obviously with some limitations, rather than just being restricted to agenda items. We need to have an opportunity to speak about other items related to our school district. And the number one thing is just to be flexible. You have to be flexible, you have to be available. I had served several years on the board for the Noblesville Elementary Football League, and it was nonstop emails and text messages that I would field day in and day out. And that's just what I did. It was part of the position. So I'm not opposed to opening communication, and, you know, if I've gotten second when a text message or an email or something comes through, get with the other board members on a proper response and then respond. We can't keep putting people off. We just, we have to open communication.
Chuck.
My two daughters sitting in the front row here, off of state, Dad, nobody's school board's like you do. I show up everywhere. You know, Saturday, I was at a cross-country meet in Shelbyville, I had two soccer games in Kokomo. All right, that was just Saturday. In general, I move around town and put myself not under the table. Everybody sees me around town, whether it's over at Rosie's or anywhere else. I'm very approachable. I've never put anybody else. I'm always respectful, always, always respectful. I have met some people who wrote me some nasty emails, and I said, why don't we meet and talk about this? And there's some nasty people out there, okay? And I'm not afraid to meet with them. I will meet with them, I will treat them graciously, and I will be highly respectful, and I will always take the high road. So I'm available. I'm not under my desk. I'll do that. All right? Now, students, I'm speaking tomorrow morning. I'm going to speak at Career Fair, okay? I regularly speak to students, I regularly speak to teachers. I'm going to be speaking to the Life Skills children next week, which are our children that need to be in school till they're 26, and kind of help give them the right kind of attitude that we're going to approach life with, and that things are good. So I have school board about 20 to 30 hours a week. Yes, I have answered emails for the last two years. It's been about a 20 to 30-hour-a-week job to do that. I don't dodge a one, okay? And I'm happy to meet with anybody, even the harshest critics. And I think that's what you have to do as a school board member. You need to be out in the community all the time. I've made a real effort to bring in Mayor Jensen and his team, because our schools need to be, as you said, a community schools. And we've been so fortunate here for the last 100 years to have a community school here. Thank you.
And then Chuck.
I'm going to approach it like I do most of the other organizations I serve in. I'm going to get to know the constituencies, the stakeholders. I'm going to build relationships with them. I speak at schools. I spoke at IU this morning. It was a long drive, but I did it. I've been in every school in the county. I've been across central Indiana, and I'll do the same thing, as I do in the business community, as I do in the education community, and in my job. I'm going to get to know my stakeholders, and I'm going to build relationships with them, so we can all work together to move the mission forward.
The next area is finance and resources. Our community has relied on referendums to meet the financial needs of the school corporation, both for capital projects and operations. What is your view on the continued use of this tool to meet the educational needs of our community? And we'll start with Brian.
Yes, so in 2018, we doubled our referendum from 18.9 cents to 37 cents. We all know that, doubled it. And we focused on three very important issues: safety, mental health, and teacher pay. And I don't think anyone in this room would argue that those three issues at that time weren't important. And I don't think anyone in this room would argue that those three issues have gone away miraculously since that time. Also, the state isn't giving us any more money now to just miraculously run our buildings. So a referendum is the lifestyle that we have grown accustomed to. And what I cannot tell you is what percentage we will need to continue funding, or that we won't need 37 cents per $100 assessed. What I will say, if we want to continue running Noblesville at the level that we've grown accustomed to, a referendum is what we need. Every other district in our area has a referendum. If our referendum miraculously went away, there would be a shortfall. Something's going to have to give, and we could not operate our schools without that referendum. So if I'm elected on a board, yes, I would support a referendum. And I think our students, our teachers, and our community deserve it.
Misty.
So referendums need to be looked at with a fine-tooth comb. We need to make sure we're evaluating, not that you haven't, but make sure we're evaluating to get better use of our dollars. Not everyone in our community can afford to have another referendum, especially in this current climate. Passing the approval for this latest $34 million improvement to be done in two stages at this current climate was probably not the best decision, in my opinion, because we have so many people here in our community that are struggling making ends meet. And when we're going out and spending $34 million to do some renovations on areas of the building that are not involving academics strictly. Now, you know, we've already got some, just for example, is what I'm saying to review and look at a fine-tooth comb. We don't need to redo our weight room right now. We've got a 10,000-square-foot, state-of-the-art weight room. So it's just things like that that, does it really need to be done right now? Probably not. We can probably do stage two first, because that would more affect the classroom-type activities that we need. So just to really reconsider on any referendums, yes, we do need to focus on teacher pay, and we need to keep our items separate on the referendums, so that people can pick and choose and vote for ones they want.
All right. Yeah, referendums do not pay for any of those things we just mentioned, okay? That comes out of another fund. Referendums pay for, you know, our teachers and social workers and safety. The state legislature changed everything around about in 2008, when we went and changed the way the property tax caps work, and it significantly changed the way both cities and schools were funded, to the point that we had to scramble to figure out how to make enough money to properly fund our teachers and properly fund the students. And cities had to scramble also to change things. So it took us about 20 years to catch back up, who we're so far behind on teachers' pay, and just maintaining things and getting them back to where we need to be. So we don't know what the state legislature's going to do in the next two years. Maybe they'll give us enough money. We don't need a referendum. But we have to wait and see what state legislatures do, and how we make that move along, before we can actually know if we at Noblesville Schools are going to need a referendum. If everything stays the same, we are probably going to need a referendum to continue to fund our teachers. Because I went through negotiations with the teachers the last two years. The biggest single factor why teachers left was they could walk over the county line over here in southeastern and make $8,000 more money, until we got that more highly organized. So I'm for referendums. If that's what the state legislature leaves us with, what we need to do to properly take care of safety, student pay, and mental health issues. Thank you.
Chuck.
I agree with a lot of people in the comments that they made. A lot has changed since the last referendum. So I would look at coming into the new board, coming in with a new superintendent, the growth that we've seen as a community. I would understand what we want to accomplish as a community for our school districts. I would look at all of the different tools that we have to fund those goals, and I would work with everyone in the community to come up with a financial plan that accomplishes those goals, simply stated.
And then Melba.
Judge Nation, may I ask that you please repeat the question?
Okay. The question was, our community has relied on referendums to meet the financial needs of the school corporation, both for capital projects and operations. What is your view on the continued use of this tool to meet the educational needs of our community?
So I would say that right now, I am neutral on referendums. And the reason why I say that is, I'm a retired person, and right now, we're going through one of the highest rates of inflation in this country that we've seen in a long time. So I can completely appreciate those members of our community, as we spoke to community members before, that have a fixed income. And anything that increases their taxes, which is what a referendum is and what it will do, is a tremendous burden for those folks. So I would say that the way that I would address a referendum is that I would take a very close look at the budget, work with the chief financial officer, work with the other board members, to see, as I said before, what do we actually need, what will actually approve the academics for the kids and their education? And if it's something that we can put off, or something that we can eliminate that does not address the education for the students, then I would say, let's look at a referendum, but a minimum amount of then I would say, let's, let's look at a referendum, but a minimum amount of funding for that referendum. And let's look at how else we can take care of our financial needs of the community.
The next section is curriculum and program. What are the skills and competencies, excuse me, competencies most important for the students to be focused on to be ready for college, careers, and life? How would you support more focused on these areas you identify? And we will start with Miss.
As I've stated before, we need to focus on our core academics, which therefore will incorporate your ability, your employability skills. So, focus on the civics, your core academics, your reading, your writing, your math, all that. You guys know what that is. The more we focus on that and remove non-academic items from the classroom, the better off our kids are going to be upon graduation, whether they go to college or go straight into their careers.
You know, the curriculum, which many people don't realize, is, is mostly formed by the Indiana Department of Education. So, we have curriculum sent down to us that we need to follow for, for, for our students. And academically, we're doing very well. If you look at the statistics I've given you before, we're doing very well academically. And I feel good about where we are and, and the kids we're sending to school and the amount of scholarship kids are getting. Now, we have 28 AP courses, advanced courses, and we have 27 dual-credit courses. We probably saved our students in Noblesville last year a million dollars in credits going off to college, one being my, my granddaughter off the brother had a lot of credits already accounted for. So, we do, do very well with academics there. Now, we have had one of the best intern, extern program for the students that may not be going off to college. Maybe they want to do something else. Or maybe some of the kids that are going to college in our extern program, they go work at River U, they came and worked in my dental office because they want to be dentists. We have 300 kids out in the community working. Dan Nicholson organizes that program. And, and Mr. Weperson have a great set of program going. We do have a lot, Brian mentioned it earlier. We do have a lot of employees in Noblesville taking these kids. So, again, our academics are good. The Pursuit Institute's coming. I see great things for all our students in career and, and, and life skills development as we move forward. Thank you.
I'll ask you to repeat the question just so I'm on the right path.
What are the skills and competencies most important for students to be focused on to be ready for college, careers, and life? How would you support more focused on these areas you identify?
Yeah, I think core curriculum is very important. I think the test scores are very important. I think we do a great job of those. Our, our ratings in the, in the, across the state are great. We're a, we're a triple-A school or double-A school, I forget what the ratings called. I think there's other things like life skills and career skills that are important that we need to continue to develop. Working in a team, managing stress, some of those other things, time management. Those are important skills that, you know, time and time again, businesses say, if only they would show up on time. If only they could show up with, you know, the proper attire. Those are things that, time after time and after time, and working in the community, I hear, those are things that I wish that I had. They just don't work well with others. They're not trainable. Those are things that we can work on with students in high school through some of these programs and internship and bringing in employers to come and talk to kids and show them how they're using reading, writing, and arithmetic in their jobs every day and applying it in, in how they make a living every day. So, I think those are things that are, we're doing a good job of, that we can continue to grow upon moving forward. So, I'd support doing that moving forward.
So, I believe that for a proper life and balance you need, basically for employability, you need reading, writing, and arithmetic. As far as growing into your adulthood and what is going to serve you in your future, I think one of the things that we need to bring to the schools is probably something like a finance course. Because once these kids graduate, they're going to have to deal with car loans, home loans, student loans, and all of those things. So, they need to understand financing. It's going to be absolutely critical for their future, saving for retirement. Something else that we can bring to the kids is, and I would agree with Chuck on this, some of these life skills like being responsible, being respectful. And when I say that, I mean, this is what in my generation used to be called good citizenship skills. Because as a part of your community, you need to understand your responsibility to your community. And you need to understand your responsibility to your employer and how to get along with other people in your workforce. Those are all life skills that are going to serve kids well. So, I think that's something that teachers can do and administration can do. But it's also a parental responsibility to teach the kids to be a good citizen and be, and be a good member of your community. Because as the chamber could understand is, if you're a good citizen, what kind of an employer are you going to make?
And then Brian.
Well, I'm so glad to hear Chuck and Melba agree with me that social, emotional learning is so important. Those employability skills are key. Teamwork, personal responsibility, those are the skills that we need our kids to have as they, they exit Noblesville Schools. Those are the skills that HR professionals, hiring managers need. Also, as I sit in the board meetings now, hearing the number cents that we're teaching our kids already just blows me away. I would have been a much better math student if that's the math that I was being taught when I was in school. And seeing the, the math that my son's being taught already in kindergarten is just scary. So, I know we're on the right track from the math standpoint. But good citizens that we're teaching our students with that social, emotional learning is, is definitely key because we are already a top-rated school when it comes to the core curriculum. But the, the career readiness is huge. We need to prepare our students for whatever they're going to do after they leave. If they're going to go to college, we have that taken care of. It's that career readiness that we really have to take care of. Because not all of our students are going to go to, go to college. We know that. So, we have to take care of them and get them ready if they decide that college isn't for them.
And we'll go back to the order again, starting with Dr. Forney. The next question is, "When faced with a decision to make about a topic or an issue you know little about, how do you approach that decision?"
Well, you all be happy to know that out of 1,800 school board candidates in the state of Indiana, I was one of 25 that got extinguished, a school board member, by attending every single board education I could go to. Only 25 out of 1,800. I did it twice. I missed the two COVID years because they didn't do it. I consume all the information I can possibly consume on education, whether it's from Dr. Heil or, or Dr. Kendrick back there. I hang out with, with David Hordermiller and go to continuing education things, trying to figure out numbers, curriculum, and, and especially school safety. I've spent a lot of time in school safety courses. So, when I don't understand something, I dive, I deep dive. That's why I did my professional practice. I, I lived on continuing education, tried to be the very best pediatric dentist that not only the state had, but this nation had. And I'm trying to be a school board member the same way. These two ladies tell me all the time, Dad, nobody's school boards like you. So, I go get it.
I'd approach it like, like everything else. You know, there's people in the community that think there, there's a candidate out there that will be ready on day one. I'll tell you, there's nobody that's going to be ready to step into this role and be an expert on day one. So, I'll do just like I do everything else. I've become a lifelong learner. I will dig in deep and I will do what is required to learn what I need to know, through research, through leaning on colleagues and relationships that I build.
I will approach it the way that I approach every other decision that I make, whether that be on the school board or whether it be in a personal matter. And that is that I seek input. I use both ears and I listen to what people have to say. Many times, I actually go and seek out the input of somebody I don't, I know I won't necessarily agree with. But I still want to hear what they have to say because it could be very important to the final decision that I need to make. The other thing that I like to do for me personally is I like to have time to think things over because I feel that by allowing yourself the freedom to think about what is a decision that you need to make, you, sometimes your first decision is not the best decision. But if you have a little bit of time, if you take a little bit of time to think about it, you seek input, sometimes the second and the third decision that you come to is actually the best alternative all around.
And Brian.
So, for me, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not the smartest person in the room. There is always going to be someone smarter than me that's experienced it, that knows more. So, I seek out the professional. I seek out the expert. Like Joe said, I always want to be learning. I want to find the person who knows it. I want to be their shadow. I have to stay certified in my profession and it's a three-year certification. I get those credits as quickly as I can because I want to have it and then get more because I just want to continue to learn. If I was elected to the school board, it's the same way. I'm going to be Dr. Heil's shadow. I'm going to be Dr. Hendrick's shadow. I'm going to be learning everything I can to find out what makes Noblesville Schools tick. I would be visiting all the schools that I can to see what makes that building tick, what makes them run great, and how we could make them better. So, then we can just move on from there.
So, I actually hold three state licenses. So, I've done a lot of studying. I've, I'm a hands-on learner. So, we're, I'm going to research. I'm going to read and I'm going to talk to, I'm going to collaborate with anyone and everyone that has been involved or knows anything about it. And I have to agree, you know, what Chuck said. No one, no one is going to be ready on day one and claim that they know everything and actually have truth to it. You know, current board members on, whether it's this board or any board, are still learning. So, you have to collaborate. You need to discuss things, bounce things off of each other. You need to shadow. You need to attend trainings. You, you know, for me, my best, like I said, is hands-on. So, I'm going to jump right in and pull my boots up and roll my sleeves up and get to, get to work.
The next question goes back to finances. What is your background, what in your background has prepared you for the fiscal responsibility of the school board that oversees 130-plus million-dollar budget? And I'll start with Chuck.
Yeah, I think my first responsibility with money and being responsible was as a manager to Subway. And I learned from there and I continued to manage funds in, in different jobs that I did. So, more recently and probably a lot more relevant, I served as the Assistant Director of Economic Development, as I mentioned before. And so, I have a unique perspective on how funds are, are going to come into the school system. And then I've served on a number of different boards locally and at the state level that manage dollar amounts, not quite at 123 million dollars, but fairly close. And so, I would have the same care and diligence that I do in managing the other boards as I would at the school.
So, I worked 20-plus years in research and development. And specifically, specifically, that was in formulating new products. In that function, I was given a dollar or cent amount that I had to formulate a product and, and bring it to market. That was, I don't need to get into the details. That was base per ounce. But basically, what that meant was that I had to put together a product and choose from about 500 different ingredients to put together a product that would satisfy the advertising, the clinical, the marketing perspective. And so, that same kind of, and I would have to bring it on budget and I would have to bring it in on time. And that happened every six months was the cycle for formulations. So, the same disciplines that I used to figure out what I needed to include, what I had to exclude, what, you know, how much of something I needed to put in, that is the same discipline that I would use to look at a budget and determine how we were going to fund something.
So, my professional background, I was HR for a Fortune 50 company. It's a big red retailer with a big white circle. Yes. Had an $80 million store in Fishers, responsible for all the financials for that building. Did that for about 15 years. Then I moved to the distribution center in Plainfield. That building, the value that I was responsible for was about $127 million because we oversaw 87 stores across the Midwest. Moved to a $30 million regional auto dealer group based here in Carmel. Now, I'm at a $25 million nonprofit based in Indianapolis. So, I have done it all, from large for-profit to small, mid-sized nonprofit. Also, been on boards with a budget of zero, where we have had to grassroots-fundraise every single cent. To my current employer, we are state and federal contractor. So, have done it all. So, have to learn schools, but looking forward to it.
So, as much as I would love to say my budget is that big, my experience on budgeting and finances is as a mom, which actually I think gives you a license to be a doctor and a counselor and a chef and all of that. But aside from that, as a Realtor of 14 years, I am considered self-employed, so it's 1099. I take care of my own finances. Cosmetology, I've got that in my past as well, which involved my own finances. I do have accounts payable experience. When I, I'd like to say when I had a real job, when I had to work for someone else. It's hard to call being a Realtor a job when you love it so much. So, that's why I refer to the other as a real job. Anyway, I've got other board experience as well, which involves budgeting. And you have to be very disciplined. And I like to think I'm disciplined.
All righty. I, I grew up on a, on a hog farm. I raised 10,000 hogs a year and farmed 4,000 acres of corn. And my dad was grooming me to be the runner of the farm when he retired. So, at 12, we were figuring out every cent it cost to put in an acre of corn, which I'm on board with, okay? But it taught you finance. I went my own direction like a lot of children do. I did listen to my father like Melba did. I listened to my father say, you need to get a great education. So, I got myself out the pig lot. From there, I developed from zero. I started to practice out here on the west side of Noblesville with, with not one single patient and build it into a multimillion-dollar operation, buildings and real estate involved, to graduating to school boarding, which has been bigger numbers. And I've, I've really enjoyed this. I spent a lot of time with David Hordermiller. Matter of fact, I just had a check-in with him before I came over here tonight just to check on a couple of numbers that we are working on in our budget. So, I, I like numbers and I like business. And I like trying to figure out how do you best manage this 10,300-student operation and make it work and justify the buildings we have, the cost we have, pay the teachers and do things. So, I'm fortunate to have a great background in finance. Thank you.
The next goes back to programming. Is it the role of schools to identify and support the social, emotional, and mental health needs of the students? Why or why not? And we'll start with Melba.
Well, I believe that the schools have always supported the emotional needs of students. I think the greater question is, to what extent? I would say that considering the amount of time that teachers spend with students every day, they get to know their students pretty well. They get to know when a student is having a good day or when a student is having a bad day. They also get to, get to know if a student is suffering or if they are having a special need. By that, I mean, you know, are they having some emotional issues, maybe dealing with some situations either in the school system itself because of bullying or some, some issues that they may be having at home? However, it is not up to the teacher. They're not, that's not what they were educated for. That is not what their job entails. That's why we- that is not what their job entails, that's why we have school counselors. But ultimately, it's the parents who need to bring up their kids and who need to take care, and are responsible for, I believe, the parents are the ones that have the greatest responsibility for seeing that their children are emotionally happy, emotionally satisfied.
And then Brian.
So, yes, I 100% believe in SEL. I believe in data, I believe in following the data. Our students are asking for help. They don't always know who to ask for help, so that's why our teachers are there, that's why they're trained in this matter. SEL also prepares our students for their careers in the future, gives them teamwork, conflict resolution, responsible decision-making, all the things that I mentioned earlier that hiring managers are looking for. The other important thing to remember, and this is what most people forget, is social emotional learning is required as part of anti-bullying legislation that the state legislature mandated. PL 285, 2013, and PL 83-218, two amazing pieces of legislation require that our state schools offer SEL to all students in the classrooms. So, yes, I am a major supporter of social emotional learning because it's not happening in every home.
Misty.
Okay. So, with the social emotional learning, there is really a fine line, especially in the classroom. I am not an advocate for having instructional time taken away to teach SEL, because that is more of a parental responsibility. And no, not all parents are doing it, but the teachers are also helping. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, if little Johnny comes to school and he's having a bad day, that Mrs. Smith can't give him a hug and talk to him and say, hey, you know, what's going on? Or, as Melba touched on as well, the students are with their teachers nine months out of the year. Now, granted, they're more one-on-one with their teachers in elementary, in the lower grades, and in the upper grades not so much because they switch classes so much, but you're still going to know your students. You're going to pick up on when something is just not right, and you're either going to talk to that student, be like, hey, you know, what's going on? Is everything okay? I noticed you weren't yourself this morning when you walked in. Or, you know, something to that nature. And if it's something that you feel is a little bit bigger, then we have school counselors, that's why they're here. Get them involved, talk to the principal, you know, talk to the other teachers that this student might come into contact with. That's what I would want for my kids. You know, it's my job as a mom and as a parent to be involved and check in on my kid and make sure they're having a good day, and find out if it's something bigger, then we take care of it, and that includes communicating with the school, the teacher and the counselor.
And Joe.
You know, this all kind of falls under mental health, and mental health is integrated into the framework for learning and is an essential component of our learning-centered collaborative environment. We have to collaborate at school, as we have to collaborate in business, and that's where this mental health issues come in. Again, the more continued education, we were sitting in a lecture this week dealing with mental health down at the Indiana State Board of Education, a lady named Michelle Gate, 2012, Sandy Hook, sent her young daughter Josephine Grace to school that day, and she was one of 28 children killed, and her point was, we have huge mental health issues in our student population, and we need to be watching for that. Now, not only from a shooting aspect, but also from a suicide ideation aspect. And my feeling is, we need to be involved in this for the bigger picture of safety, which, I had two grandchildren at West Middle School a couple of years ago, and this whole thing went down, and I still shake in my shoes thinking about what possibilities could have happened. So, I think we have to approach safety from every possible angle we can, whether it's for the bigger group, or whether it's for the smaller group, because you would be surprised the number of kids that show up on our suicide ideation list that we have. So, I am all for good mental health in our schools.
And Chuck.
I would agree, I think it's a safety issue, and I think it goes to emotional and mental health. Every kid, every teacher, every janitor comes to school in a different state of mind every day, and I think it's imperative that teachers and administrators and counselors and even other students can learn to identify when something's off, when, you know, a peer or a teacher even has something going on, whether it's a situation at home, or a relationship at school. For somebody to be able to identify that and communicate it with somebody else to help, I think that's what it requires. And that could be for the benefit of a teacher or an adult, or for a teacher to a student or a student to student. And so I think it's important that we teach kids how to communicate with one another, and I think it really is a safety issue.
And Bob, for your, we're going to now turn to the questions from the audience. What is your thoughts on the early childhood education for Noblesville schools, i.e. Little Millers? And I will start with Brian.
Yeah, so I think universal pre-K is absolutely important, it's something I would love to focus on if possible. We were on the waitlist for Little Millers, so we had to seek pre-K somewhere else. But I personally know and have worked with one of the educators over at Little Millers. I think it's an amazing program. I wish we could expand it in the district because of how amazing that program is. My son just was at Miller Explorers for fall break camp, but Little Millers is a great program, and I wish we could just expand it across the district.
Misty.
I don't have any experience with it, unfortunately. My children were all older before that came about, but I did utilize daycare and preschool for all three of my children. For starters, I think there needs to be a better and bigger discount for school employees that utilize the program, and I know it's hard to get into, there's a waiting list every year, but we need to, that's one of the benefits that we can, you know, discuss for teachers. If you have children that are in the Little Millers program, we should add that and some sort of a substantial discount for them. And my only other concern with it really, in this environment, being our capacity at the buildings, because these are taking up space in our buildings, and we've already had to redistrict a couple of our elementary schools. So I think when space is an issue, we need to evaluate that program as far as location.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think Little Millers is a fabulous program. We've watched that develop, and there's a need for it and a want for it, and I think that might be a good idea to look into, see what kind of teachers, you know, to give them the benefit of the doubt on this. As far as spacing, I think right now, our spacing in our schools after our redistricting, we don't think we'll need to do that for another several years based on the demographics that we're looking at of what our school population is going to be over the next five years. We will have a more accurate number on that as we are going to have a new demographic study finished here before, maybe not the next school board meeting, but the one after to study our demographics to see. But no, all for Little Millers, and if we can expand on this, go for it.
And then Chuck.
I know it's a highly sought-after and competitive, I guess it's not competitive, highly sought-after program. I think it's great, especially with the childcare issues that are in the community, I think no community is really winning that. And so, to provide programs where students can get familiar with the school system and in the buildings, I think it's a great program.
And then Melba.
Yeah, excuse me, I agree that it's wonderful to provide that kind of a program for young students. I think, you know, it depends, some families may want it, some kids may be prepared for it, some other children may not, but it's wonderful to have the opportunity and the possibility of such a program in our school system.
The next question from the audience is, do you support the teaching of critical race theory? And we'll start with Misty.
Okay. For me, it's a pretty short answer, and it's a no, because that is more of a family discussion that needs to happen at home and not in the classroom. Classroom is for the academics and getting the students ready for their career or their college upon graduation. So, there are other programs that can help, and I don't think our classroom is one of them.
And then Joe.
When I ran for school board last time, I had a concern about that in 2018. That was actually two years before it began showing up at the school board meetings with a question. I had read a lot about Bell, who originally wrote it at Harvard in the 70s, and then I followed that up with reading of Kendra, trying to figure out what it was all about, because my feeling was, it wasn't something that should be taught in any of our schools. So, 2018, I came to my first school board meeting with a stack of stuff on why I didn't think this was appropriate at all for our schools. I followed that up by keeping my mouth shut for a bit, trying to learn what was going on, all right? And we began to bring it to attention of Dr. Niedemeyer, and we started looking at some of the websites that we had that had links to things that related to that. So, under my watch, that got bumped off, okay? And we began to look around to see if some of this was going on in some of the classrooms. And we did find a couple of classrooms that had some stuff going on that we didn't appropriate, and those teachers were no longer with us after the next year. So, no, I came in, I came in in 2018 with that being an issue, and proceeded to take care of it along the way. Thank you.
And then Chuck.
I don't have the depth of understanding of the concept that Dr. Joe does, however, I know that it's an advanced theory that was kind of brought to light in higher education. I don't think there's any place for it for K-12 education, I don't think it's being taught in our schools, and I wouldn't support it being taught in our schools.
And then Melba.
For me, this is actually a personal issue. As I stated in the introduction, I am Cuban. My granddaughters look very different than I do, they happen to have be bear skin and blonde hair and hazel eyes. And I had a situation where it was questioned whether I could pick up my granddaughter from daycare. Because we looked so different, there was a suspicious, suspicion that was raised as to whether I was somebody that was allowed to pick up my granddaughter. So, critical race theory is something that is very personal to me, I do not believe in teaching it. Do I think that kids need to learn about some of the history in the past and the way that one, one race has not been kind to another? Yes, I think that's important to learn, but the way that it's currently being taught and the theories that are currently being taught, no, I do not believe they belong in our schools at all.
And then Brian.
So, make it five for five. I don't believe CRT should be taught in our schools, I don't believe it is being taught in our schools. In my conversations with Dr. Hile and with other educators in the district, I don't believe it is, and if it is, we have extensive investigation procedures and it would be dealt with very quickly. Our teachers have more important things to do than to be teaching CRT. They're focused on state standards, they're focused on teaching accurate history.
I'm going to divide these two questions from one individual, and the first one is, what level of importance will you place on test scores at Noblesville schools? And we'll start with Joe.
You know, that's a good question. 92% of the people in our community survey, which is not done by our schools, said that those types of tests were fine and dandy, but they did, they'd much rather see us develop life skills and career-ready kind of thing. So, I think throughout there, the state requires us to do them, I think there's better tests than some of the state tests that they put out there. If you've noticed, we've had I step one, I step two, I step three, and I learn over about five years period, because the state doesn't seem to get figured out what they want to test us on. And I think our overall community has spoken to us that it's far better to get these kids ready for college and for careers than these academic tests.
Chuck.
I think these standardized tests are one measure of performance of a school. I think it's kind of limited in its focus, I think we need to look at a student and their ability to be life and career-ready, and I think academics is a part of that, but again, I think it's one measure, and it's, you know, tied to a lot of things at the state, you know, they've asked us to measure that, but I don't think it's a, it's one measure. I'll say it's one measure of performance.
And then Melba.
Yeah. I don't think that test scores are the only way to measure whether a child is learning or not, and you have to distinguish between, is this a test that you're doing one time a year, twice a year, or is this, are you actually measuring the student's progress with several tests throughout the school semester? So, no, I don't think that we should focus on just test scores, but I think that we can use test scores, if the tests are given frequently enough, that you can see whether the student is progressing as they should be, and that way you can evaluate whether you need to develop a special learning program for them.
And then Brian.
Yeah. As a poor test taker myself, I had a lot of test anxiety, I don't put a full stock in a single point in time to wrap a student's whole person into one test. We have to take all of the student into account and not just look at, as Joe mentioned, the six ideations of this state test that we can't even figure out which one we're going to use, especially as we're coming out of the COVID era and we're now having to help these students figure out how to be students again in a real-world environment. So, no, I don't put a whole lot of stock in just a single standardized test.
And Misty.
I echo, again, what the rest of them said. I don't place a really high priority on the standardized test because there are so many other ways we can measure. The teachers already do their benchmarking throughout the year, and their ongoing work throughout the school year is going to reveal how well they're progressing, and there are other ways that we can jump in and intervene if there's an issue. And, again, it's not a priority. I mean, it is one of the many ways that do need to be considered, but it's not the only way.
And the second part to this question, how as a board member will you support teachers in achieving academic excellence? And I'll start with Chuck.
Yeah, I would rely on their expertise to make requests to the administration for the resources that they need. I think something that, you know, we've been dealing with and we're going to continue to deal with is technology and the way kids, you know, are receiving information in the classroom. And so, we have to continue to look at how they're going to interface with those technologies and how they're going to continue to adapt. I was fortunate to go through the Miller Ambassador's program this year, and it was eye-opening and exciting, but I was in awe at the difference of a classroom setting from what I went through, you know, not too long ago compared to other people, to them. And so, today, it's totally different, but it's exciting, and I rely on their expertise, you know, to ask for those resources to continue to support them.
Melba.
So, as I believe I said earlier, to me, it's very important that we have respect for the teachers, and that means respect from students, respect from parents, respect from school board members, and respect from the rest of the community. So, how I would support them? First, I would like them to know and hope that I can show them that I am always willing to listen to them, that I am not looking to take sides, and that I will have their backs. And that is, that even includes sometimes disagreeing with maybe what the administration wants to do, but if you have a good teacher, you want to keep that good teacher, and it's important that you show them that you respect them, that you honor them, that you're grateful for their service, and that you're going to compensate them appropriately whenever possible.
Brian.
So I think, as I mentioned before, it's those open lines of communication, meeting with the teachers, making sure that they know that they can come to me at any time. It's also ensuring that they have the resources that they need. So that is, when we do open the collective bargaining agreement, that we are not solely talking about the state-mandated bargaining items. We're open to talking about those other items that are not on the table. So we're having an open and honest dialogue. I think that is really important as well. What's going to be best for the teachers is what's going to be best for our students. It's a symbiotic relationship as well, because, as Melba said, we want to make sure that we're retaining high-performing teachers. So it's having difficult conversations at times with administrators, and people have to make concessions sometimes.
And then Misty.
I agree on all those points, but I would rely on the experts, which are the teachers, are the administration, the superintendents. I think another... I think another element of that is also parental involvement, because once you get parents involved and actually show an interest, the rest of it just naturally follows. And I know not everyone is able to do that, but we can certainly try. And just to communicate and advocate for the teachers. They do a lot. They really do a lot, more than a lot of people know. So, they need to feel like they're valued. So, we need to show them they're valued, and we need to advocate for them, and yes, it is having the hard conversations sometimes, whether it's with the teachers or with the administration. You have to be willing to do that.
And then Joe.
All righty. I'll continue sending handwritten thank-you notes to all the teachers when I get back in, okay? One of the things, just like being a professional as a pediatric dentist, teachers are professionals, and one of the best things that we can supply for them is continuing education. Just like Chuck said, things change so fast, and from my beginning of career to the end in pediatric dentistry, things changed. So, we are good about school, about supplying continuing education time, and we do self-in-house teaching of our teachers. We have great people in our learning department help to teach the teachers how to teach, and we also have input from outside sources that do that. And I think back to a parent issue. Now, schools have opened back up. We had to close them up for a couple of years, and that's sad because you've got incredible resources in this community that can teach kids. I am speaking tomorrow morning, as I said, to the life skills class, or no, I'm doing something else. I'm doing career development tomorrow with all the freshmen, okay? And next week, I'm going to be in another class, Real Men Read. It's open to all of you, okay? If you volunteer, you can go into schools. There's just an incredible resource of talent in this community.
Well, that ends the questions from the audience. I'll give you just a moment and collect yourselves for closing statements. And again, what we're going to do, we're going to go in reverse order from the opening statements. So, if you're all ready, look at me, and if you want to take a moment, you're ready?
Right. Let's go.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. I want to be sure everybody, is everybody ready?
Get it going.
Okay. Please, proceed.
Starters, go. All right. Again, I spent a lifetime work in the area of Noblesville with the Noblesville children, advocating for children in Noblesville. During the last four years as your school board member and the last two years as your school board president, I have spent an incredible number of hours in our schools and in the greater Noblesville community, reaching out to everybody to help make these schools better. If you'd like to maintain local control of our schools, I ask for your vote November the 8th. Thank you.
Chuck.
I spent the majority of my adult life serving. I served eight years in the Marine Corps. I moved back to the community, central Indiana, and I've served the Noblesville community ever since, and so I want to continue to do that, and I would ask for your vote. I hope that tonight I've conveyed, maybe not always articulated clearly, but I hope you understand that I genuinely care for our community. I've been serving since 2016. I want to continue to serve in this capacity, and so I'd ask for your vote on November 8th.
And then Brian.
So, just like our Noblesville Schools diversity statement reads, with Brian on the board, I will serve all of Noblesville, not just a portion of Noblesville. Agree with me, disagree with me, I will be here to serve you. So, I really look forward to hopefully earning your vote on November 8th. Thank you for your time tonight.
And then Misty.
I have done a lot of serving. As I stated earlier, my oldest is 27 years old. That is when I jumped in with both feet as a mom and got involved. Now, I don't hover. I get involved and I just make sure that they are able to function and, you know, do what they can on their own with a little bit of parental support. It's a partnership. You have to be a good partner with your child's teacher, and this is a very important job, and it should not be taken lightly by anyone. With my experience on, serving on various boards before as a mom for 27 years, I also attended the Miller Ambassador Academy, sorry, back in 2018. I've also served on the reading review committee for the elementary education here in our district. So, I do have a lot of the experience in and out of the school. It's all with children, and my motive is to be as a mom, coming at it with mom eyes and making sure our kids are getting what they deserve, while also partnering with the teachers and making sure they get what they deserve and what they earn. So, I, like the others, ask for your vote and hope to get your support. Thanks for coming.
And then Melba.
So, I'm sure that the majority of people in this room have heard about mama bears. Well, I consider myself a grandma bear. I love children, I love my grandchildren, but I just love children in general. I'm actually retired, and I came out of retirement because I have a passion for kids. I want to make sure that they're prepared for their future. I want to make sure that they're happy and healthy and supported. So, as I said, I'm retired, I have the time that I can dedicate, no matter how many hours a week that is, to learning as much as I can, to supporting our community as well as I can, but to make sure that I'm doing the absolute best job that I can, to see that these kids grow up, to have the education that they need so that they can pursue the opportunities that they want for their future. And I would hope for your vote on November 8th.
Thank you all. But just some closing comments. You can vote early at the Hamilton County Judicial Center or also at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds. If you want to know the times, they're usually open between 8 o'clock and 4:00 or 4:30. They're also open on Saturdays, so that it opens up five days a week and on Saturdays. So, please go ahead and check the Hamilton County website to go ahead and to see exactly their hours, but please go ahead and use that opportunity. And of course, Election Day is November the 8th. That will be from 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 in the evening, and that, you would have to vote at your precincts. I'd like to thank Jim Walford and Hamilton County Television for the webcast. I would thank the officials here in the city of Noblesville for the use of their council chambers, but I would like to personally thank these candidates for coming forward and wanting to serve the citizens of Hamilton County. I think we should give them an applause. It is amazing, when you look at our state and our nation, how we cannot get good candidates. We have got good candidates here in Hamilton County, and we should thank God for that. Also, I want to thank each and every one of you for being here, because again, it frustrates me so much as an elected official for 42 years, that when 10% and 15% of our population show up, we're giving away our freedom. And you've shown tonight that you want to keep your freedom and make those decisions for our children. So, I thank you. This is being streamed by the Hamilton County TV, and you can see that, or you can go to the Hamilton Chamber website to see it. So, with that, if there's anything else, Bob?
Thank you very much.
I'll.
Thank you.
I would stand up and say, all rise, but I think that's.
Right.
Thank you very much.